Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. Today's date is November 13th, 2025. We're going to begin tonight's hearing by establishing a quorum. I'm going to do a roll call. Barbara?
Here.
Anthony?
Here.
John?
Here.
Dick?
Here.
And I'm here as well. Having established a quorum, we will now begin the hearing. We have four matters on our agenda tonight. We're going to take the first one out of order, which is Petition 5193. This is NSG Matachesset Village LLC and Nantucket Sound Group, Inc. Excuse me. Property located at 897 Route 28 South Yarmouth. It's in a B1 and B2 zoning district, as well as the HMOD 1 and VOD 3. The applicant seeks a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law 40B, Sections 20 to 23. The project requires a number of waivers from 202.5 multi-family use, 203 density, number of building lots, and building separation, 203 building height, 203.5 building setbacks, impervious coverage, 301.4.4 parking buffer, 301.4.6 in-lot trees, and 301.5 parking spaces to conduct three buildings for a total of 27 rental units, of which 25 units will be restricted for low and moderate income households. This matter was continued from 9:25. We received a letter dated November 13th, addressed to the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, care of Mr. Sean Igoe, Chair, regarding notice of withdrawal, comprehensive permit application for 897 Route 28, Matachesset Village. Dear Chairman Igoe and members of the Board, please accept this letter as formal notice that NSG Matachesset Village LLC is withdrawing its comprehensive permit application for the proposed Matachesset Village development at 897 Route 28, submitted under Mass. General Law Chapter 40B. After evaluating the circumstances surrounding the review process, the applicant has elected to discontinue pursuit of a comprehensive permit and will instead prepare a revised proposal under the existing Village Center 3, VC3 zoning framework. We appreciate the time and attention the Board has dedicated to the application to date. No further action on the comprehensive permit is required, and the file may be closed. Sincerely, Stephen J. Clary, NSG Matachesset Village LLC. Having heard the request of withdrawal, is anyone prepared to make a motion to allow them to withdraw?
A motion.
That motion, is that done without prejudice?
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor made by Mr. Martin to allow the petitioner to withdraw without prejudice. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We're going to take a roll call. Anthony?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That has been withdrawn without prejudice. So that matter is closed. If there's anyone here on that matter, they've withdrawn their petition. Thank you for coming. Okay. Let me have a second here. The next matter is Petition 5190, the town of Yarmouth. Property location is 400 Higgins Crawl Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R-40 zoning district, as well as the APD, and Zone 2. This is a petition for the Board to reconsider Petition 5190 in order to clarify the conditions of the decision. Our Police Chief Lennon and Fire Chief Rasquay here?
Fire Chief is on his way.
Would you like me to call us again, Chief? We can take another one if you like.
No, we can keep going. He said he'd be here in a couple minutes. It's up to you. He's not here, but he will be here shortly.
All right. Sit down. We can get started. All right. Thanks, Chief. Okay. And if you may, please identify yourself for the record.
Kevin Lennon. I'm the Chief of Police for the Yarmouth Police Department.
Okay. Now, this matter was before us some time ago on a request. Let's just see what we got here. This was a request, I believe, in some for the police and the fire department to utilize that space for training purposes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And at the time, for some reason, I know you guys are busy, that we didn't have you present, so we weren't exactly sure what you wanted to do. So what we did in your absence is we put a condition on there that only the police department, the local police department, and the local fire department, please come up, Chief.
I'll just...
Good evening. How are you?
How you doing?
Good, thanks. Could you identify yourself for the record?
How you doing? Enrique Arasque, I'm the Fire Chief.
Nice to have you, Chief. I was just going over the form of petition that we had put certain conditions on there, restricting it to only the local police and fire to use that as a training facility. Since that date, it's been brought to my attention that the police and fire use this to cross-train with other agencies and towns. And so is that a fair statement? And you guys are looking to modify that?
Yes, that is correct.
So tell us what you'd like to do.
So we would like to have the ability to use the building with the approval of the police department and the fire department. So right now, we have a shared calendar. So anytime the building is used, we can go in and we work with the DPW, so we know if they're going to be in there working, or if we're going to have training going on. And we stay away from the auditorium and the gym side, so we just work on the other wing. The beauty of that building is that it's a unique training facility that we don't have anywhere in the Commonwealth. You take that and you tie it with the Gannon Training Center, which is next door. It provides an opportunity for not only local, but state and federal partners to use the building, and they have. Couple weeks ago, we had the ATF training at the police department. We've had the DEA. Next week, we're going to have a regional SWAT training going on. So by allowing other agencies to use the building, it offers them the same opportunity that offers us, it's just another avenue to train, another place to work. Anytime we use the building, we have strict safety guidelines in place, so if we're going to be outside, we put up signs that says, "Police Training, Please Stay Out." We're very aware of the other activities that go on in the building, so we make sure that we don't interfere with rec. We make sure that if there's anything that's going to happen, we did a large-scale exercise last year. We notified all the neighbors that they were going to see an increase in public safety vehicles. And then, once we're in the building, we make sure that everything is done again as safely as possible. I know one of the concerns was the potential of live fire. We don't use any live weapons in the building. We use what's called simunition, which is basically soap. It's a marking cartridge that we can shoot a projectile at another person, and it stings. So we can do force-on-force training, but anytime that is done, it's done under extremely strict conditions with safety officers, and nobody would be able to walk into the building that wasn't part of the training. So again, this building offers us a unique opportunity to open up a venue that, again, other agencies wouldn't have the opportunity to use. With the Gannon Training Building in the past, it's been asked, can we charge people to use it? We don't do that, because if we go and train off Cape, we don't get charged to use the building. So like, our K-9 officers, they train regularly in Brockton, Plymouth, Middleborough, and those police departments find abandoned buildings or unused buildings, and they allow our officers to go train there. So this is kind of an in-kind. And the building, again, it's just, it's unique, and it gives us a different opportunity to allow people to train. So we just, from the police department's side, and I can speak to the Fire Chief on this, and I'll let him add in, but this is a unique opportunity for us. We would just, you know, respectfully request that we go back to the way we have been using the building, which was if somebody wants to use it outside the Yarmouth Police Department, they call us. We make sure that it's open. It's not a conflict with anybody. They check in with us. They use the building. They check out with us, and we just make sure that everything is done correctly. But it is a unique training opportunity for us. We are one of a handful of places in the Northeast that has the training facility, the Gannon Training Facility, and then to be able to go next door and use that other large building. It's rare, and it's a great opportunity for our local, state, and federal partners.
Okay. All right.
Basically what he said, but we also do, we do some of the other unique opportunities through the Department of Fire Services at the state level. We had a class last year that we were able to host by having that building. And the big advantage with that is by hosting, a lot of the times, we get offered seats as like first refusal. So we get our people in first, or more seats than we would get anywhere else. A lot of the classes are sought after and hard to get into, and it's great for us, because then we, you know, we guarantee 10 seats for either Yarmouth Fire or Police. So it's a great opportunity for us.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
I think that covers it.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
We're going to go to the Board for any questions that they may have. Barbara, do you have any questions for the Chiefs?
No. Thank you for your presentation. That's all. Thank you.
John?
Just a couple. So are you present when, like, the ATF is there, or are they there on their own?
We are not present. We will have an officer check them in. So Officer Kramer, one of our K-9 officers, has kind of become the caretaker of the Gannon Training Center, and he works a lot with the ATF with their K-9 training. So for the most part, we are not there, but when they come, we have somebody meet them at the building, let them in, make sure that everything is set up correctly, and then at the end of the day, they close up, and they let us know that they're leaving, so we can swing over and make sure that everything's been taken care of.
And since this is a unique facility within the Commonwealth, do you see this becoming more and more utilized by other agencies in the future?
I would...
And now?
Potentially. Potentially, because it does offer, you know, police departments, SWAT teams. We're always looking for a new place to train, same with the fire department, because if you use the same location over and over again, it becomes stale, and the officers become used to it. So for someone to come off Cape and go into the Matacasset Village, which is a very unique structure, the way it's set up, it offers them the opportunity to set up unique challenges for the officers. And anytime we teach tactics, we can teach anybody to enter a room. We teach them to work in a different environment, so they have to put what they learn into practice, and the school is just, we've been in there numerous, numerous times using it, and every time, you just make a little tweak to it, and it really challenges the officers.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Dick?
No, I have no questions or concerns about it.
Okay. I don't really have any questions either. I think it's been well explained. I certainly agree that having a training facility like that's an invaluable asset. And certainly, we want you, our police and fire department, to be best trained as you can be. God forbid we ever need to call upon you for a real crisis, and unfortunately, in this day and age, we see more and more of it, and we want to make sure, if the call goes out, that whoever shows up, and it's going to be you that shows up, are ready to go. And it sounds to me like the training that you're providing only yourselves, but others in coordination with them, because you may have to have cross-agencies, depending on what crisis might arise. Is that a fair statement?
100%.
Yeah. So I'm very much in favor of this. I think it's a great asset for the town, and I'm very pleased what we hear, and I have no problem lifting that condition. Does anyone else have a problem with lifting that condition? No.
None at all.
I don't really feel at this time that we really need conditions on this. I think we're dealing with two agencies that are very professional.
Is that's on Mr. Penabianco on line?
Oh, Anthony. I beg your pardon. Do you have any questions for the petitioner?
I do not.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No. Just thanking them for their service, and it's a good practice to have for training. It's great.
You know, for somebody who...
We appreciate their consideration in training other agencies. But I personally appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Anthony. I don't think we need to put any conditions on this. I think to, you know, coin a phrase, they can police themselves. Okay.
I like your meaning.
I'm confident in both of your abilities to do what's right and to make sure, and it sounds like your presentation, you've got the bases covered. So I would say that we just issue the special permit. We'll modify this one. We'll remove that condition, and we will... So is anybody prepared to make a motion to eliminate that condition that we put on the prior petition, 5190, modify it so there are no conditions?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion made by Anthony. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we require any further discussion on the motion?
Were there more than one condition, Sean?
The only condition that I recall that I think we put on there was that only, let me just see. Hold on, let me see. Oh, no use of live fire. I tell you what, we'll leave that one on. We'll leave it on. Your representation to us is certainly sufficient. I don't think any successor of yours or any officer would use live fire in a training exercise like that. It's just not the way it's done.
We would not.
Okay. Let me look at the conditions. No use of live fire. Yarmouth Fire Department provide a detailed memo. We have memos from each of them. Yarmouth Police Department, Fire Department training only. We're going to eliminate that. If other fire Yarmouth... It says, "If other than Yarmouth Police or Fire Departments, return to the Board." So I guess what we'll do is we will approve the special permit with the only condition that there'll be no live fire used. Otherwise, you're self-policing.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And we're confident that you'll do a fine job doing it. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to take a roll call. Dick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That carries five in favor, none against. As you may or may not be aware, there are, once the decision is clocked with the town, there is a 20-day appeal period that must lapse. Once you get that, 20 days goes by, Dolores will contact you. You can come get the special permit, and I guess they're going to have to record it.
It could be them, or it could be the Recreation Director.
Would you just see that somebody gets it recorded? You could touch base with the Rec. Director, but somebody's got to go over and record it, the registry of deeds, the special permits. And just return a copy for our records, if you would.
Sounds good.
Do you have any further questions?
No.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your service, and very nice to see you both.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
All right. There we go. Okay. The next petition on our agenda is Petition 5200, Anar Abasov. Property is located at 10 and 10A Ruby Street in Yarmouth. It's in an R-25 zoning district, and the applicant seeks to modify Decision 3992 dated January 24th, 2006, and/or a new variance to allow an increase in the total number of bedrooms from four to five. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for certified site/plot plan less than two years old. Good evening, sir. Have a seat.
Thank you.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah. I'm Anar Abasov.
Okay. And you are the owner of the property?
Yes, I'm the owner of the property.
Okay.
Yeah. Four years, I did a finished basement, four years ago.
Okay.
But they told, if you want to do the bedroom there, you need to go to Borders Apple's. But if you don't want a bedroom, you can start doing the kitchen and bathrooms there. And I did four years ago kitchen and bathroom, because I had the wedding. I should finish this, go to my wedding, four years ago. Yeah, I didn't need bedroom at the time, but now I have the three-month-old baby, which one, my wife, she's studying in Bridgewater State University, which one, that's why my parents, they need to come for take care of baby too. We don't have enough space for this one. That's why I need to just put, everything is ready on the basement, but which ones, on the map shows, just I need to put like the door for the, and on the purpose has to be the bedroom, just, and septic is the five-bedroom septic on the house.
Okay.
I don't need change about the house, I need just, which one I came here about the documentation.
So you have a two-family house there right now, correct?
Yes. One side is rented, because I need to pay the mortgage.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Do you own any other properties on the Cape?
Yeah, in Hyannis.
Where?
In Hyannis.
Hyannis? What's that address?
23 General Patent Drive.
Okay. All right. All right. I have a declaration of homestead here with your name on it.
Do you need this one?
That 23 General Patent Drive. When you put a declaration of homestead, you can only do that on your primary residence.
About decoration? What do you mean?
Your declaration of homestead, that this would suggest that your primary residence is...
My primary residence is not Hyannis. My primary residence is Yarmouth.
I'm sorry?
My primary residence is Yarmouth.
Okay. What does your driver's license say?
Yarmouth, 10 Ruby Street.
Can I see your driver's license?
Of course.
Thank you. One hour.
This is the...
How many driver's licenses do you have?
This is five years ago. I'm using now.
Okay.
I want to show both, same mothers.
All right. Okay. Hold on one second.
I have the old one, because both say same mothers. In the last five years, I have the same mothers. I didn't change others. My family, I believe.
Okay. All right. You age well. You look the same age.
[laughing]
He likes to use the same photo, you know.
Yeah, I know. Okay. All right. All right. So you live there. That's your primary residence?
Yes.
And so you're saying that you're going to live, you live, so let me understand the floor plan, because, believe it or not, I remember this case a little bit. It was a long time ago. That's not a case, it's a petition. So this is the layout right now?
One side. Can I come this way?
Sure. Come on up.
This side doesn't have the basement. This is rented. This side has basement.
Okay.
On the map, which one you see, it's the second upstairs, like.
Yeah.
This is the basement. Which one goes from here to the basement?
Yeah, those stairs go down. Okay. Everybody see that? You go down the stairs to the basement, right here. He lives on this side. He's rented this side out. You see the stairs going down?
I live in 10 Ruby Street. This is the 10A Ruby Street.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and on the ID2, it's 10 Ruby Street, not 10A.
Okay.
And here, you go to here. It's always this done, four years ago. It's a bathroom, kitchen, and says living area, which one I want to put the door here, just, that's all. And this is the storage room.
Where do you want to put the bedroom?
Here or here, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Actually, maybe I'm not going to do nothing there, just on the purpose, which I like doing everything legal. I don't want to...
Okay. Why don't you go ahead back there, because we want to get you on the record there, so, yeah, on your microphone. Okay. So you finished this off, did you?
Yeah, everything is done. I'm not going to do nothing inside of the house.
Do you have a building permit?
Yeah, I have the building. I can show you this one.
No, no, no. We could verify that if we need to.
Yeah, yeah. I have it from the electric, plumber, and building inspection. They came four years ago. They checked, they signed. After they signed, I didn't change nothing. Everything exactly same. House here, I didn't change nothing, because I don't like doing that without permits, nothing.
So what brought you before us? How did you, who told you had to come see us? The building department?
Yes. Because when I want to change to the five, actually, four years ago, they offered me come to here, 2021, when I, before I start this one.
Yeah.
They told you have two options. You can start going from the Borders Apple's, or you can do without bedrooms there. Just no bedrooms. That's why you have to keep the five feet open. That's why I keep here five feet open, and I keep here five feet open. And this means no bedroom.
It's more of an opening, and it's not closed off as a bedroom?
Yeah. Because I didn't need, at the time, that's why I didn't do it, and plus, I should go to my wedding. I didn't have time, because Borders Apple's, you need to make the appointment, wait the time.
Do you have two forms of aggress in and out of there? Is there two ways to get in and out?
Yeah. One is a...
See the going down the stairs? Is there a bulkhead also?
A bulkhead, too. Yeah, bulkhead is here, you see?
Uh-huh. Okay.
Here's the bulkhead. It has the door, and here's the second entrance.
Right. Okay.
And windows big, too. Windows, the regular house-size windows, not the...
And you had your inspections, plumbing, electrical?
Yes, everything is done.
Building?
Yes.
Building approved to work down there?
Yes. I have the probably, if I can...
I believe you. You just tell me.
Yeah, building inspection.
You actually have one of the Assistant Building Commissioners sitting right behind yourself.
But it was another...
You could verify it for us.
Yeah, but it was another person inspected, Brett. He came, he checked it, and he signed it.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go to the Board with some questions now. Anthony, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
I think I understand the application. The, you said it right in the beginning, but I think I missed most of it, but the reason for trying to go from a four to a five is for family, personal family considerations? Is that what I understood?
Yes.
Yeah, but it was another person inspected, Brett, he came, he checked it, and he signed.
I'm gonna go to the board with some questions now. Anthony, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
I think I understand the application, the, you said it right in the beginning, but I think I missed most of it. But the reason for trying to go from a four to a five is for family, personal family considerations, is that what I understood?
Yes, he's, he needs the spare room for who's gonna live down there?
I don't know who we're gonna live because, because of my parents coming, and plus my wife's parents were gonna come visit. My parents is resident of United States, but my wife's parents is not residents, they are coming for, always for one month or two months. Take care of baby.
Family's gonna come visit?
Yeah, always families come because if not legal bedroom, I don't wanna, someone sleeps there.
So we put a condition on that, that you couldn't rent it, you're comfortable with that, that downstairs alone?
Sorry?
That's not gonna be a separate unit, that's just gonna be a bedroom that's gonna be connected to the upstairs, correct?
Of course, I don't wanna separate.
Have a, or ten B Ruby Street?
Of course, I know.
Okay, so we just.
Yeah, I know, I didn't come here for the three, three family units, because house is two family unit, I'm okay with this one. But I wanna just not four bedroom, five bedroom, actually, just forget about another side two bedroom. This side's two bedroom house, I don't want a two bedroom house, I want a three bedroom house. The reason of that I'm here is this one, I don't wanna ten B or something, anyway. I don't have time for make the, then it's gonna be too much problem for me, electric bill, everything separate, I don't wanna.
Anthony, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, did you have another question?
Yeah, so when did you start living at Ruby Street permanently?
From two thousand nineteen.
So, so we have a letter from a butter that says this summer that ten occupants lived there for J one students. So how would you live there with ten other occupants this past summer?
Backside, and I did with the town hall, I have the papers, I did renting, I bring here and town hall came and check it. And it was ten students.
What's that?
Didn't was ten students, was six students, and it was behind of the house, which one I did rented.
You had six students living where?
The behind of the house, which one's another house, which one I'm saying is I'm renting. Ten A Ruby Street.
Which, which one?
Ten A Ruby Street.
So the other side of the house you were renting to students?
Yeah, this summer I was renting to the students.
Okay, and you were renting to six students?
Yes.
What's the maximum occupancy for that? What is, two bedrooms, Tim, what is that?
I think it's two.
Four.
Two, please come up here, thanks.
I believe the health department, I believe it's two per bedroom, but that's through the rental program in the health department, that's not two building.
So that, that, thank you, Tim Sears, assistant building commissioner? Thank you, Tim. All right, so. That's a two bedroom over there, correct?
Yes.
So you were exceeding the amount of people that were living over there this summer, is that fair to say?
I don't know.
We had six and you're only allowed four.
I didn't know this one, because of the, next to the, there has the hotel. They put the J one students, four person in one room, always. Like town and country hotel.
What's that got to do with ten A Ruby Street?
Yeah, that's why, and students came from there, and they told it's four persons there, and that's why they moved to my house because of the, they living three person in the one room, so I didn't, I didn't know it has to be there.
Okay, so.
Who do you permanently live with? How many people do you permanently live with?
He's asking you, how many people do you permanently live with?
Me, I lived with my wife, but baby is three months old. Yeah, most of the time I live with my wife, and with my parents too, depends, all time it was changed.
Okay. Okay, so your parents, your wife, and you have, what'd you say, a two month old?
Three months old.
Three month old, okay, that's good, okay. Anthony, do you have further questions for him?
No, I'm just trying to understand how the neighbor gets to the valuation, or the number of ten people that were occupying it. And it, the way I read the notice from the butter, that the applicant wasn't one of the ten, or the family members, but. So that does give me a concern.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, I think if we do anything tonight, I, I think we should definitely have a discussion about conditions and occupancies. So everybody's on notice, but we.
Excuse me, can I just say, I think maybe the, who's saying about ten person because of the six person on the backside, and four person, me, my wife, and my parents, this summer could be ten person.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, for the whole house, not for the.
Anything further at this time, Anthony?
No.
Barbara, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, I've got some concerns about the noise complaints over this past summer. Could you give us a little more information about what was happening?
I don't know about.
One of them says that loud party music and voices about twenty people, that was July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah, could be just some celebration, but it was after one AM or something.
It was what?
Didn't was after one AM or something, I don't know, because always, I'm living five years and one, someone's complaint, I don't know. I'm living there five, six years and just one times complain, I don't know what's happening. I cannot remember, I don't remember July twenty-fourth.
Got a police record right here. Yes, more than one complaint.
Yes.
July twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-five, there was a noise complaint. At eleven PM. Loud party, music and voices about twenty people. Did you ever party on July twenty-fourth?
It didn't was party, I didn't, I think I was not there at the time.
You were not there? So is it your testimony that there was a party of twenty people going on at your house on July twenty-fourth?
In July, I don't know, just one second, I were gonna check, maybe I was at the hospital because of my wife, she was a pregnancy one week, about ten days before of the pregnancy, before the baby, because baby was born in August four.
Now let's see, yeah, let's go back to twenty-three and twenty-two. And you've been living there since two thousand nineteen, correct?
Actually, it's like the end of, beginning of the twenty, maybe, I purchased a nineteen house, and I did a little bit renovations there, and then I moved, maybe, because I purchased the house end of the nineteen, November or something. But I don't remember when I moved, two thousand nineteen December or two thousand twenty January, yeah, something like that.
Okay, twenty-three, it looks like you had some dispute over there, there was an arrest made at that address in two thousand twenty-two. So matter of verbal warning. Okay, let me see what we have here from one of your neighbors. This is dated, this is from Dmitar Ivanov, do you know him?
Sorry?
Dmitar Ivanov?
Me too, no.
Nine Ruby?
No.
Okay, they must live right across the street from you. Dear members of the zoning board of appeals, I'm writing in reference to petition fifty-two hundred concerning the property located at ten and ten A Ruby Street, West Charmeth. As a neighbor living across the street on nine Ruby Street, I would like to express that I have no objection to my neighbor request to add a fifth bedroom. However, I would like to bring to your attention a concern that I hope will be taken into consideration. During this past summer, the property was rented out to J one students, more than ten occupants living there. The issue was not the occupancy itself, but the, rather, the frequent noise disturbances. Almost every night, the tenants gathered outside on the front lawn until late hours and after midnight.
Yeah, we were sitting in the front because of the ten Ruby Street doesn't have the backyard.
Sleeping out front or hanging out front till later? Why don't you let me finish the letter?
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
Almost every night, the tenants gathered outside on the front lawn until late hours and after midnight. In or maybe on few occasions, I had to go outside and tell them to be quiet. On one occasion, there was a large party of over twenty to thirty people on the front lawn with loused music and shouting after ten to eleven PM, which led me to contact police, this sounds like the July twenty-fourth incident. Also, the yard wasn't kept clean and indoor furniture was still kept outside. My concern is that the expansion of the property may lead to similar situations in the future if it continues to be used as a short-term rental or seasonal rental with a high number of tenants. I appreciate your attention to this matter and trust it will be taken into account when reviewing this petition. Okay. Do we have any other correspondence?
No, Mr. Chairman.
The only one, okay. All right. Anything else at this time? Oh, I went to Barbara, Barbara, any further questions?
No, I'm just very concerned about the, you know, the J one students and, and the noise complaints. Yeah.
All right, John, do you have any questions?
I don't have any other questions, but I have similar concerns about the management of the property.
Okay. Dick?
Yeah, I actually have a lot of questions, and comments. And with all due respect, this is a two-family house now containing four bedrooms on a tiny lot, less than a quarter acre. The second dwelling, and this is a single-family neighborhood, by the way. The second dwelling was added way back when as a concession to the then handicapped owner to have another relative or something or other there at one point. That appeal decision allowing that was supposed to expire when they sold the property. Unfortunately, they sold the property and the next person started to continue to use it as a, as a duplex, which it shouldn't have been, and actually, if you go back into the, some of the stuff, it said that the, the second, second apartment was supposed to be dismantled and gotten rid of, never was. The owner, I guess probably before you, bought it and continued to use it as a duplex. When that was found out, they came to a board of appeals, and, and because of the circumstances of not knowing it, I guess when they bought it and so forth, they were given leniency to continue it. Actually, it may have been them that were supposed to dismantle it as well. So I mean, there's all sorts of things going on here, we got a duplex on a tiny lot, five feet from the lot lines, or one lot line, in a single-family neighborhood that never should be there to begin with, and that's not your fault, I know. Although somebody should have looked back into some of this stuff and, before you bought it, found out that there was an issue going on here.
I didn't know about this.
Yeah. And so that's unfortunate. Your, your septic, septic system is for four bedrooms only. And if you look at that, it'll say both the design and the uses for four bedrooms, and not five bedrooms. And I can't imagine the board of health being too happy about this becoming a five bedroom, and if it did, it would need a, probably a bigger septic system. So you've got all these different issues going on that, you know, and again, a lot of it's not your fault, it may be your attorney's fault when you bought it, but this all, this house should not be there in its presence, presence state. And while I can see you providing relief for it to continue to remain the way it is because of the situation or you not knowing, hell, if I'm gonna vote for going up in the number of bedrooms. I'm also concerned that both the neighbor and other parties are talking about all, all these people and parties and so forth. And if you're living there, I would think you'd be noticing that and dealing with it and taking care of it and saying, quiet down, guys, what's going on here? And apparently, that's not going on. I mean, there's all sorts of things going on, I'm, I even still have a question of whether you're even living here, whether the whole place is rented, or, and whether you're still living in Hyannis. And yeah, there's just a lot of things that are, are problematic here, to me anyways, and there's no way I'll be voting for a five bedroom.
So here it says five bedroom on the papers from the town hall.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none, correspondence has been read into the record, do we have anybody online with their hand up?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there anything else that you'd like to add at this time before we close the hearing to the public?
About the septic, this is I took from the town hall, here says the five bedroom septic, can I show it to you?
Well, we'll take your word for it, this, I don't, I don't know that the septic system is really the concern, but I have it right in front of me. Okay, we'll take a look at this, just for purposes of, so we know.
It's on the middle of the paper.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
Well, the inspection showing it is four bedrooms, both by design and, and what's there? Was two thousand nineteen. This plan here, that I guess you're referring to, does say five bedrooms. But I think that that must have been done at one point for you.
This has got a date of two-three two thousand.
Okay.
Down the bottom in the.
So I think that that must have been done by your previous owner, maybe trying to make it five bedrooms at that point, and that didn't happen.
Okay, well. Of course, were there to be any relief granted, it would certainly be predicated on it. Five bedroom septic to be able to. To be maintained on the property. Anything you'd like to add?
Just about the septic, that's all.
We're gonna close the hearing then, we're gonna open it up for discussion, Dick, we heard your comments, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I just think five bedrooms is on such a tiny lot in a single-family neighborhood is the duplex that was illegally put there to begin with. Is, to me anyways, a big no-no.
Yes, I'm not changing nothing in the house, I'm keeping same thing as well.
We've closed it now.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know, yeah.
That's, that's okay, no problem. Okay. John, what do you think?
Well, I tend to agree with Dick, I don't, I don't think we need more people living on this lot in property. I think, it sounds like there's enough there already, so I'm not in favor of a fifth bedroom.
Okay, okay. Barbara?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of it either with the, with the complaints, noise complaints and in light of the letter from your neighbor, and I'm not, I'm got a real concern whether the property is actually owner occupied, so. I wouldn't be voting in favor of it either.
Okay, Anthony, your thoughts?
Yeah, for digging holes, I would not be in favor either.
Okay, all right. Well, I do share the board's concerns, and I, and I think Dick raised the concerns, certainly that I had. I'm gonna date myself here for a second because I sat on this petition in two thousand and six. So I've been around for a while on this board, so, but I recall this petition, some of them you remember. And this was a bit of a unique situation, and the petitioner came before us, were you on this one, Nick?
Two thousand and six.
You were on this one, but at any rate, you're correct, Dick. This was an illegal duplex is what it was, and we felt at the time, and it required a variance, and we felt at the time that it would be a financial hardship and not really realistic to have them tear it out of there. And so we granted the relief, but there was a condition here. And when you bought this house, you need to do your due diligence, or if you had an attorney, he needs to do, or she needs to do, he or her due diligence. And I'm gonna read you the conditions. It says, to grant a new variance to allow the present two-family use to continue, it was not legal, on the condition that it remain a four-bedroom, two-family dwelling, two per unit, that's two bedrooms per unit, that no structural enlargement or alteration is to be made. But the current renovations, current pending reservations, may continue to completion. I didn't under, no, I can't say that I recall that, but my understanding was that's for the upstairs, I don't think we ever considered anything downstairs. So what you've done is you come in and you've completed the downstairs for the most part, correct?
Yeah, it was the finished basement, not no bathroom there, yeah.
You do so sometimes at your own peril, and you really, this is, this is part of your deed. When someone does a, a title search, at the bank, let's say you had a mortgage on it, they should have picked this up. You should have picked this up. And if you did, this would be on file, and you'd be able to read that right there and know that you couldn't do this.
I did everything by the town, I did, I got the permit.
You can't blame the town, the burden's on you.
Saying I didn't know, that's why I came to the town. town. I did paperwork, everything, you know. I don't do never, by myself, nothing, you know. I came, I did. That's why I'm here to...
No, I understand. You're not, you're not trying to do anything underhand. We understand that these things happen. But unfortunately, you're in here asking for variance relief. And as Dick said, this is on a very small lot. This would never be allowed to today. And you're increasing the density here. Wouldn't it appear, I mean, I don't know how many people are living there, but if you're telling us that you got ten people and having parties, and you got a three-month-old, I'm not sure how that all works. But, you know, now we've got neighbors' concerns. But I just think, and I am very concerned about the neighbors from a variance perspective, I don't believe that you meet the criteria for variance. Because in order to do so, you have to have a hardship. And the hardship has to be owing to circumstances relative, relative to the soil conditions, topography, the shape of the lot, none of which I think apply here. And a literal enforcement of the bylaw would represent a substantial hardship to you. Now, the voters at the town meeting, okay, and Chapter 40A, the state legislature, all right, passed this law, okay? It's really the legislature that passed it. We adopted it. But I don't believe that you meet the criteria for variance. So for those reasons, and the reasons elaborated by Dick and the concerns of the other members, I can't support this either. So, right now, you have five members against and none in favor. In order for you to be successful, you would need four out of five votes. Now, you can do one of two things. We can take a vote, which I believe you will not win. But that would give you the ability to appeal our decision to a higher authority if you should so do so. That would preserve your rights. If you choose not to do that, and you want to withdraw this petition without prejudice, I think we would allow you to do that. However, what you have there is not legal. And I have a feeling that the building department is going to write you a letter saying that you're in violation. And that stuff probably has to be taken out. I think it's gonna have to be taken out anyway.
Taking out what?
It's not there legally.
But I got the permit, everything, and I did, I spent a lot of money?
I understand that. I do. I understand that completely. But this is clear, this decision, that no structural enlargement or alteration is to be made. And what you did is you increased...
But it was the basement. I didn't increase the basement. I didn't add the anything.
But you finished off the basement.
It was finished when I purchased.
Well, somebody finished it off at some point, and they didn't do it legally.
I know, but all paperwork I did was the town, by the town. I didn't do nothing by the town. And town check and give the permit to me, and I start spending the money to the basement. I didn't do nothing without getting the permit.
Well, you're not, you're not sitting here with the benefit of counsel. So I might suggest to you that you have us take a vote on this. You're not going to succeed, but it would at least preserve your rights. Okay? You would have to appeal within 20 days.
I'm going back home. I have the ticket. My baby's in back home right now.
Well, either that or, I mean, we're gonna move the question. We're going to take a vote unless you ask us that you'd like to withdraw the petition. But I don't see a way for you to come back and modify this to the extent that the board would grant you the relief that you need. What I think you might be best served doing, and we're going to take a vote unless you want to withdraw, is in the 20-day appeal period, you may want to speak with an attorney and see if there are any legal avenues that you can pursue.
I don't understand. I need to take off the basement, you mean?
Uh, that, that is not, that is not for this board to determine.
Yeah.
That would be for, that may be for the building department. You could speak with them about it. But in terms of what you've done here, we can't grant you the relief, and it runs contrary to prior decisions, that you are actually on actual notice because they're part of your title of ownership, the registry of deeds. So you're on actual notice that you can't do that. So you can't really use mistake as a defense.
But I didn't add the bedroom. Town Hall told me about this paperwork. And they told, if you don't add the bedroom, if you don't keep the bedroom, this is not adding the something extra because you have the basement anyway. You are not doing nothing extra. That's why they told me five feet open.
I'll tell you what. I think what you should do is go back and have another discussion. What you're here today to ask us for is you're asking us to allow you to add a bedroom. That's the only thing you've asked us for.
And I need to go to appeal for the adding bedroom only, right?
Well, we're, we're, we're only dealing with your request. We're just putting you on notice that there should have been no structural change down there, or to the entire building, for that matter. Both sides. The other side is included as well. So, would you like us to take a vote on this, or would you like to request a withdrawal?
What, what does mean? Request withdrawal? You don't do votes, just, right?
Well, I don't think a withdrawal's gonna do you any good, to be honest with you. It would, it's just gonna leave you without any remedies because you can't, you can't do anything until you, and this, you may not understand this, but you need to exhaust all of your administrative remedies, which means you can't appeal our decision unless we make a decision. This preserves your legal rights.
Anyway, if you were gonna say you cannot add the bedroom, I would not gonna appeal. I will not do the appeal. I don't want to...
Okay, well, let's just go over what you've asked for in your relief, first of all. So we're clear on that. You have asked for, in the legal petition, to allow an increase in the total number of bedrooms from four to five. That's all you're asking for tonight.
Yes.
That's, that's all we're dealing with.
Yes.
We're not dealing with whether there's a kitchen down there. That's between you and the building department.
Okay.
You have discussions with them. All we're saying is, we can't, oh, let me rephrase that. All we're saying is, we're not in support of a fifth bedroom. So that's what we're gonna vote on tonight. Okay? If you wanna have further discussions after tonight with the building department as to whether what you have down there is allowable or not, that's, you can take that up with them.
I have one question, sorry. You told about four bedroom can have the four person, uh, two, sorry, I'm sorry. Two bedroom can have the four person. No, I have just one question. Is it for adults or with the kids?
That's not, that's actually not a question that you ask this board. That would be, who handles the town rentals? Probably the Board of Health. That's who would tell you how many people can occupy a bedroom.
No, because of the reason, I have two bedroom right now. One bedroom I wanna make for the baby. And then, I don't have, if someone comes for the, for my family, take care of the baby, they don't have space for the stay. That's why I'm saying. Then, if we're gonna, I have to just do together, baby in our room, you know. We cannot have, we cannot have the...
I, I understand completely what you're saying.
Yeah, that's why, it just, I'm not adding any person extra to the house, you know. I'm not adding any space in that bedroom.
Again, you've asked us, you've petitioned this board for relief. We've had a discussion on it, and we're prepared to make, to take a vote. So I think we should probably take a vote on this. I don't think that withdrawal is gonna benefit him. So...
I can do this door too. It doesn't matter.
Okay. Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Make a motion to deny the petition's request for a variance?
For variance?
Yep, for variance.
Let me see what he's, okay, he's got two requests for relief. The first one is for a variance. We have a motion on the floor to deny the request for variance.
Second.
We have a second. Motion made by John, second made by Anthony. I don't think we need any further discussion on this. I think we've fully discussed it, unless anyone else wants to add anything else. Does anyone else want to add anything? Hearing none. We're gonna take a roll call. Anthony?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, to deny the variance, that variance is denied. On the second request for relief, to modify decision 3992, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Just gonna move.
Got a motion made by Dick. We have a second, that that's to deny the modification of petition 3992.
Yep. I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? The only thing I would add to that decision, well, the only thing that I can add to that decision is, I don't think you can modify a variance. I, I've always been taught that you need a new variance. But as it may, the same, the same rationale applies to the modification as the denial of the variance. Okay? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Anthony?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That's zero in favor, five against. The modification fails as well. Thank you very much. Sorry we couldn't help you tonight.
This mean, I'm keeping same thing? I cannot add nothing, right?
Well, you, you can't add a fifth bedroom. That's all you asked for tonight.
Yes.
Okay. We, we can't discuss what, what else may or may not be able to remain. That's something for you to speak with the building department and the health department above.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you for coming by.
Thank you.
All right, the next matter on our agenda is petition 5201. The Mayor LLC, the property was located at 183 South Sea Ave, West Jarmouth. It's in an R25 zoning district, and the applicant seeks to reverse the decision of the building commissioner per 102.2.3, paragraph three, for building permit to construct a 12 and a half by 24 garage, and/or seeks revocation of the building permit and demolition permit of the constructed garage. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for a certified site slash plot plan less than two years old. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
I am Anka Bulgaro.
Constantin Carceli.
And we are the owners of La Mare LLC. I would like to mention...
Okay, hold on just one second because I wanna get my plan out here, so I know what we're looking at.
So we are the owners of 185, I think. I don't know if it was...
Okay, okay. Let me just look here. Okay. You own property at 185?
Correct.
Did I add?
Who, you, who, are you the owners of the LLC?
Yes.
Okay. So you own property at 183 as well?
No.
Okay.
The petition is against 183.
So this is a problem. So until two, three years ago, it was 185.
Yeah, we divided this. I remember that.
Divided this into 185 and 183, and the address change was made in February 2024. So 185 is ours, and 183 is the former owner.
So Crowell Heritage condominium was created after an appeal to the board in June 2023. We purchased in, in February 2024. The owners of the condominium, Andrea and Cynthia Led, applied for separation of addresses. 185, Crowell Heritage condominium, 185 Unit A, became 185 South Sea Ave.
Just so we know, just so we all know what you're talking about, I wanna refer the board to this plan right here. Okay? We have these two units. I believe they were all on the same piece of property at one time. And we allowed you to condominiumize these.
Yes.
Okay. So they became a condominium. And this dotted line right here, correct, separates the two properties, and those are what we call, in condominiums, exclusive use areas, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, you are coming in here and asking us to revoke the building permit for the garage?
Right.
Okay. And why?
Okay, so in, so the owners of 183 planned for at least 18 months to renovate their property and build a garage. And there is documentation of their plans that were multiple times reviewed. So in June of 2024, they applied for a permit without, that didn't include the garage. And actually, they proceeded with demolition and renovation of the structure without the mandatory approval from the condominium board of trustees. That is mandated by the condominium master deed and also the Massachusetts General Law 183A. So...
Yep, that's the condominium law. Okay.
So at a later time, again, without having an approval from the condominium trustees, they proceeded to build a garage, infringing on the exclusivity line, coming within inches from the exclusivity line to the point that they damaged the invisible dog fence on our property that is installed one foot away. So we, they, they did not have our approval for any of this changes, any structural changes and renovations. So on December 20th, 2024, I came to the building department to ask to put a halt on the construction, and I was told that that is not possible. And then over the next eight to nine months, I came multiple times and asked for a copy of the permit for the garage because we saw online that the permit issued in September 2024 did not include the garage. On multiple occasions, we were told that plans were there, and it took at least 10 requests till they finally, in September of 2025, admitted that no permit for the garage was ever issued. And they retroactively asked the owners to apply for a permit. But during this time...
Sometimes that happens, yeah? Okay.
Well, we think that they, as they were planning to build a garage, they intentionally didn't apply for the permit not to draw attention to how close it comes to the exclusivity line because that violates also one of the provisions under which the condominium creation was created that wouldn't...
So that violates one of the condominium, condominium master deed?
And the bylaws of the town.
And the bylaws of the condo.
Because it, bylaws of the town because it creates hazard nuisance, and it affects the character of the neighborhood. So, and, and then, so, so then basically, they, I, we consider that they intentionally deceived the inspectors, you know, that they had the permit, that the permit included the building of the garage, to proceed with obtaining all the codes and proceeding with the building. So we feel that I, I addressed these issues on multiple, multiple occasions with the building department, and they ignored us, and they allowed... and they ignored us and they allowed the building to proceed knowingly and knowingly that there was no legal permit ever issued. So we-
Can I just stop you there for one second? Because I did take a look at this, and I did some little investigating on this. And I'll let Mr. Sears chime in in a moment. But this line right here, what we look at is we look at whether you comply with setbacks. Okay, and if you comply with all the setbacks, a garage is permitted to be constructed where you want to put it. Now, you saying that it's too close to this line, correct?
Correct.
Well, you see, the problem is this is not a property boundary. This, this over here, see these lines right here?
I think that we-
These are property boundaries. Let's say they put that garage like five feet off the property boundary. They built a garage. That would not be legal because in this zone, they need to be at least 15 feet off. Okay, but see, they're way over in the middle of the lot. That lot right there is not considered a property boundary. That is a boundary that's drawn by you and the other people in the condominium. And what that is, is that's an exclusive use boundary. Meaning, everything on this side is his and everything on that side is yours. Now, I don't know what's in the condo docs about, about building up two lines or anything like that. But that would be something the two of you would have to have an argue about, argument about, perhaps in a court of law, that you violated the terms of the truss, of the condominium docks, the master deed, or the rules, whatever you have. But in terms of this right here, it appears, and I'm going to ask Mr. Sears for an opinion, but this appears to be a legal garage and it meets the setbacks. Is that correct, Tim?
Not common area.
Yes, because as you say, we don't, we only take property lines into consideration for zoning purposes, so.
I think that's where the confusion might be.
I think that we understand this issue, that although that there are different properties for taxation purposes, there are not, no different properties.
Let me turn the question around then, if you understand it. Why don't you tell me legally why that should be deconstructed?
So legally is because he intention-
In terms of the bylaws concerned, the Yarmouth bylaw?
Can either-
Because it violates the-
Which section of the bylaw?
103.1 that says that the Crowell condominium creation was expressly conditioned on avoiding undue nuisance hazard and detriment to neighborhood character. And that it's basically creating undue nuisance.
What section are you looking at?
103.1.
Let me look at 103.1. Let's all look at that.
So in terms of the undue nuisance, the owners of 183 acknowledged their visual impact and stated they would plant greenery to cover, to soften the view, that's how they called it. And there is absolutely no space within inches to-
Where were you looking at that required? Where were we looking at?
Then in the, in the decision for the condominium creation. And it is-
Well, if you're relying on 103.1.1, building permits, is that where you're looking?
Yeah.
Let me read that into the record. It says requirements, permits, 103.1.1. Compliance certification, building structures or land may not be erected substantially altered or changed in use without certification by the building commissioner. That such action is in compliance with then applicable zoning, which it is right here, or without review by him regarding whether all necessary permits have been received from those government agencies. The only government agency that's going to be applicable in this case is going to be the Yarmouth Building Department. There's no others like the state, for instance, or the federal government. From which approval is required by federal, state, or local law. Issuance of a building permit or certificate of use and occupancy where required under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Building Code may serve as such certification. I think, I haven't looked at the building, but the only thing that we do, the building department does on a building permit, is to make sure it complies with the building code.
Well, they didn't have a permit to build.
Well, this is, this is what happens sometimes.
There were multiple violations.
Wait, 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 just let me finish and then I'll lay down. What may have happened here is he may have added the garage without a permit. Now, if you have a building right there and you don't have a permit, and the building department comes in and says, you built this without a permit, but it complies with all the building codes and you're in compliance with the zoning, they're going to say, you need to come down, fill out a building permit application, and pay the necessary fee, and you're all set. Is that what happened here, Tim?
Yes, there was a little, there was, originally when he applied, there was some plans that were needed. So he wanted the permit issued just for the remodeling because he didn't want to get started. And then mistakenly, the foundation got inspected before they actually had the permit. The contractor uploaded new plans, but never actually applied for the permit for the garage till we looked at it later. So once we made him aware of that, then he came in and applied, and we issued the permit. But it meets zoning, so it was not really an issue as far as setbacks. And all the inspections had been done, so there was not like they covered up construction or anything like that, so.
No, unfortunately, that does happen, but the remedy-
Can I intervene for a second?
Sure, go ahead. Thank you, Tim.
So one of the requirements for having a legal permit for, by a condominium association, they should have an approval from the condominium association. So the initial application, which was in June, did not have our approval. There was no meeting with us. Our first condo association meeting, we bought the property in March, on March 8. Our first meeting was at the end of August, on August 20 something, during which we went over the condo documents, we signed them. There was no mention about garage, about anything. There was no mention about, about us having to sign the approval. There was no, they didn't ask us about anything. We knew when we bought the house that our neighbor wants to remodel the barn, as he called it at the time. And we were okay with that because initially, it was supposed to be within the footprint of the building. Nothing extra. So during our condo association meeting at the end of August, there was no discussion. There was, they didn't ask us for, for a signature. And that building permit was already applied in June. So from the condo association point of view, not even for the initial renovation, even without the garage, there was no condo association approval.
Well, what we have here-
And one more after that.
Is you may have a cause of action, you may have a remedy that you can seek, but it's not with the town, it's with the other owner.
So I, I, if I could bring additional, so the building department has the authority and the responsibility to enforce local bylaws and also rules and regulations, and they should do that.
We don't, we don't, we don't read everybody's condo docs.
No, 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 just the laws, the laws of the state.
That's correct.
There are multiple violations of the laws. Apply intentionally starting construction without a permit is sanctioned by law, Massachusetts general law, like I have here today. So the remedy is fine, or, and also proceeding, it's, and with each day of violation considering a separating offense.
Could be up to $300 a day, yeah.
Yes, so then submitting like false information to the inspectors in order to obtain, like to obtain approval, making this fraudulent claim, is also punishable by Massachusetts general law. I have here the number, and it can be punishable by fine up to $10,000 and imprisonment. We also appealed this because there were multiple issues with the Yarmouth Building Department enforcing the law of permitting and inspection. We think that they covered up for 183, you know, knowing, allowing them to pursue inspections and approvals for unpermitted work.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait, 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 wait. See, the problem is, is the building department didn't do anything wrong. Somebody, no, 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 no. Their job is to make sure things comply with the building code and zoning. They make sure that, you know, your setbacks are right, you're not too tall, things of that nature. Your foundations are at the proper height, all those building code things. If your condo docs say that you can't build over that boundary line and somebody builds that, that's not the building department's job. That's your neighbor's job to not do that. And if he does that, he subjects himself to perhaps damages that he caused to his other owners. Okay, if he's in violation of the condo rules. But your action is against him, not against the building department. If you want to do that, you could file a cause of action in the superior court to enforce that, if you want to do that. But that's where you're, and I'm not trying to give you legal advice, okay? So please, just, I would tell you to consult a, an attorney that's very knowledgeable with general law chapter 183A, that's the condominium law. That's where you go. But in terms of what you're asking for tonight, we don't have the authority to revoke a valid and legal building permit, and that's what we have here.
So you just said that, just a few minutes ago, that you can't use mistakes as a defense? There were so multiple violations of laws and also issuing approvals for, and codes for, for the wrong address.
You're mad because the guy built on the property. The town's not going to come in and do that. If you, if you file a lawsuit against the town, they dismiss it out of hand. You can't maintain an action for that. The town's in the right.
You can legally build up to a foot from that lot line too, or?
Well, actually, it's less than a foot. I have a picture here if you would like to see.
The thing is, is you, it's the condo docs. It's not, I understand that, but that's not with us. They meet the setbacks under the zoning.
But what I think that we have an issue with is that when my wife went to the town, to the building department in December and asked for stopping the construction, at that time, the garage was in the framing stage.
Okay.
If it was an injunction, if they would have accepted to stop, then it would have been a different story.
Well, I don't, I don't have any knowledge of that, but I can say this. That if it were under construction, and in all aspects, it was legal by way of the state building code and the setbacks and the zoning, the only thing that they're going to say is, you need a building permit. Sometimes people build things thinking they don't need a building permit.
Oh, that wasn't the case.
Now, I'm not saying that's what this person did. I'm not saying that at all. But I'm saying it does happen. And if it's done in compliance with the building code and you meet your setbacks in your zoning, then the normal remedy for the town, okay, and for the person, excuse me, the person that's building it, is for them to either submit their plans, pay the fee that's owed, and then it'll be done with proper inspections, which I presume happened, and it was allowed to be built, and it's legal. That's what a judge is going to tell you. So what you're asking for tonight, because I, I think we've heard what you're saying. Is anyone in disagreement with my position?
No.
Anyone? Anthony, are you in agreement with my position?
I just might add that it's, we had one of these on South Street a while back where somebody built a very large shed, pretty much right up to that exclusive use line. And it was a same thing, was determined that nothing we could do about it, that they had potential legal recourse against, uh,
Owner.
Yeah.
It's not a property line.
But it's not, it's not, nothing they can, would-
So what we're going to do here tonight, we've heard, is there anything new that you'd like to add?
Yes, we consider that the building department discriminated against us and treated us in a very unfair way. It took us at least, I mean, the only reason there is a permit is because we kept asking for it, and it took us at least five times, I'm sorry, 10 times. On August 22nd, I came at 11 o'clock. They told me, no, 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 there is a building permit, it's online. Go and check it again. The same thing at 1, the same thing at 3:30. And, you know, what you are saying is that people can con their way into getting this. There are multiple issues with the permit.
I tell you what, I'm going to stop you right there, okay? And I disagree with your characterization of our building department. I happen to know them, okay? Now, they're very good people, honest, hardworking people. They do a good job, and we're lucky to have them. Now, if you don't have anything new to add, we are going to move along here. I'm going to ask, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. Dolores, do we have anybody with their hands raised?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Unless you have anything new to add, we're going to close this for board discussion, and we're going to take a vote.
I think that it is very unfair, that there are so many violations of state laws and-
I'm going to tell you in a second what you can do, okay? We're going to take a vote here in a minute, and then I'm going to tell you what your potential remedies are. Okay. Anyone wish to have any further discussion on this matter or make a motion? The motion would be, well, we have two. First one is to reverse the decision of the building commissioner. And I guess the decision of the building commissioner was to issue the permit. So, a motion should be made to, I would say,
Deny.
Uphold the decision of the building commissioner. Do we have a motion? Anyone prepared to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Dick and second, second by-
Second, I'll second that. Sorry if I jumped on somebody.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. We're going to take a roll call. Anthony?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So we voted to uphold the decision of the building inspector, so we're not going to reverse it. So it was five, four to uphold, zero against. You've asked, it appears to also seek a revocation of the building permit and demolish, demolition of the constructed garage. Anyone, well, we can take a motion on that. It's not really a zoning issue because that would be an issue for the building department. But I think upholding the decision of the building department. But I'll tell you what, just to cover our bases, is there a motion to deny the relief sought to revoke the building permit?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? The only thing I'd say is I don't believe it's a zoning issue. I think that's a building department issue. This is either to really uphold the decision of the building inspector to issue the permit, which I believe was lawful. So we have a motion to deny that relief?
Yes.
Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
John, who made the second?
Second.
Dick?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion by John to deny the revocation of the building permit. Seconded by Dick. Any discussion? Hearing none. Any discussion, hearing none. Anthony?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That carries five in favor, zero against to deny the revocation of the building permit. Now, when the decision is written, okay, it'll be filed with the town clerk. You'll be notified. Okay? You have twenty days to appeal our decision if you want to appeal it. You can appeal it either to the superior court in Barnstable or the land court in Boston. Before you do that, I would highly recommend that you consult with competent legal counsel. All right? Also, as per your remedies against the person that you own the condominium next to that built the garage, there may be remedies for you there. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, but I have to express my opinion that.
Sir, but the hearing is all over.
I understand, just for you to hear. I think that once you have regulations on the board, if they're not followed and if this goes forward, I don't think it's fair and I don't think it's according to the state of law, in my opinion.
Sir.
It's, it's my own opinion.
You're not only allowed your opinion, but after, within, if you, once that's filed with the clerk, you have twenty days to file an appeal in a court and appeal our decision if you think we're incorrect legally. So we're, I'm just telling you what your legal rights are in case you wish to exercise them.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much and I'm sorry we couldn't help you. Wish you the best.
So it's obviously clear that some people are more equal than others and then the year-round residents are treated fairly, especially if they are part of the town board, no? So this is really a case where, you know, I mean, they paid, they gave them a fee for three hundred dollars. How does that compare with almost twenty thousand dollars that we spent in legal action against the condo owners that could have been cut short?
The hearing is over, ma'am.
If the building department really addressed this issue in a timely fashion.
Mr. Chairman, there is other business on the agenda.
Okay, we have minutes?
Yeah, minutes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's see what we have for minutes here. Can I see those minutes, please? Okay, thank you very much. All right. All right, we have the executive session minutes.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to approve the executive session minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion made by Nick, seconded by John. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, that passes unanimously. We have a, we have the minutes, we have the minutes of the hearing on September twenty-fifth. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Have a motion made by John, we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Barbara. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? Those are approved. And we have the minutes of October ninth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Sorry.
Okay. We've got a motion made by Dick, seconded by John to approve the minutes of October ninth, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing none, those are approved. Dolores, anything else on?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a second?
Second.
Do we need any discussion?
Think so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we stand.